Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 6, 2023 Planning Board Meeting. We first please stand for the pledge.
Turn around.
Oh, it's over there. I'm looking outside.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Constitution of our nation under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
For minutes there, I thought you were pledging to pardon.
No, I know. I know the flag's outside. Sorry for the confusion. We are going to adjust the agenda a little bit as we are waiting for Aaron Bach, who's running a little bit late. He will be docked pay for his targeting. So we'll first go to the correspondence. Anybody got any questions, comments?
None.
Okay. We will then move on, excuse me, to the meeting minutes of October 16, 2023. Anybody have any corrections, comments, concerns?
None.
John? Okay. Do we have a motion then to move the meeting minutes of October 16, 2023?
Motion, second.
Okay, we will, and I do want to ask counsel here while we're out in the open. So we had a site walk this weekend, and we were confronted by an angry person that we were walking the property and that we were trespassing. And when we go on these site walks, we're permitted, and we were on this gentleman's property, but then we traversed a road. It was a road. It was a private road, but a road. Are we in any way not permitted to?
I wouldn't think so.
Right? It's published. People know where, right?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't start walking into his house, but...
No, we weren't.
If you're on the way, I think you're probably fine.
Also, the person that we were with has rights to the road, being that...
Right, they don't have it.
Some of the property he owns on Kipling and the other leg of his property fronts at the very end of Taconic Woods, so I would think that he has rights to it as well.
So we should be in the clear.
Did they say anything in particular?
Oh, very angry.
Just get off my lawn?
No, he was just, he was a little bit upset. And, you know...
Right. He would only own to the middle of it anyway, so, and he would be only one owner along the entire stretch of that road, so I don't know if he could represent everybody along the road.
I think that's right. I think you're fine.
Okay. Okay. That being said, we'll move into the regular portion of the meeting. First on the agenda, we have Dorchester Glen subdivision. This is a request for a reapproval. The location is 1646, oh, 43 Maxwell Drive. We did get a letter from Joe Rena earlier. We cannot make it. He says, "We are currently working with the New York City DEP and Westchester County Health Department approvals. I am hopeful we will complete within six months." Any issue from the board?
None.
John?
I wish you were here.
Counselor?
Nope.
Do we have a motion to reapprove, to approve the request for reapproval on the Dorchester Glen subdivision?
Motion, second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the Roberta Front Street request for a first one-year time extension. Location is Front Street. Also Joe Rena, and he states that the project is now moving ahead. The owner is proceeding with the architectural construction drawings, and I expect that they will be filed for building permit with the upcoming months. Any issues from the board?
None.
John?
We have no issues.
Counselor?
No, sir.
That being said, do we have a motion to approve the request for the first year, first one-year time extension for Roberta Front Street?
Motion, second.
All's in favor? All right. Okay. Moving right along. Do we have a motion, a motion to move into the work session, please?
Motion, second.
All's in favor? All right. First, we have the Savanna's Restaurant. This is a discussion of site plan. Location is 3901 Cronell Road.
Good evening. Good. How are you?
Good.
David Tetra, representing Savanna and Company. This project is taking an existing, they have an existing front porch where they have outdoor seating, and they're going to enclose it so that it's just inside space, so they could use it year-round. The seating for that exterior space is not changing by ways of enclosing it, so we're not increasing any occupancy numbers or seats or anything like that. What they're doing is they're taking the right portion of the, or the large portion of the seating area and enclosing that, and in doing so also creating a little bit of a, not a little bit, but a vestibule at the front entrance, so that it's not just bringing the cold air in in the winter and letting the air conditioning out in summer. Entrance is still going to be from the front, except instead of it being where it is now, directly across from the main entrance door, it's going to be shifted west, to the left, I'm sorry, east, to the left of the entrance. So you're still going to enter from the front. Nothing's really going to change, except for the fact that instead of railing, there's going to be walls with windows.
That's the, that's the gist of it.
Is it going to be seasonal, seasonal enclosure, so that it's...
Are the walls removable, or are they going to be permanent? No, 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 it's, it's permanent. Permanent enclosure? Yes.
Any variances or anything required?
No. No, no, no.
Parking?
Nothing changes. Like I said, the occupancy is the same.
Outdoor seating is now going to be indoor.
Correct.
Wasn't the parking ratio for the outdoor seating different than the parking ratio for indoor?
Not at the time that we went in. It was a, it was a one-for-one shot.
Well, can you explain to me what, what the patron dining says ancillary, one space per hundred square feet, whereas the other one is one space for 50? Can you tell me where that space is then? Because it says here, the first floor space was 850 under ancillary.
You know what? I couldn't answer that because the 850 square feet is not the square footage of the patio. I'm sorry? Correct. I'm trying to, I'm trying to think back, because this was a couple of years ago. I honestly can't remember what the ancillary was, because we have, because we have...
I'm just wondering if there was a distinction at that time that now is being changed by the fact that it'll be enclosed?
No, because if you look above that, where it says areas under patron dining...
Right.
It says first floor, 1,300 square feet interior.
Right.
First floor, 550 square, 50 square feet exterior. Second floor, 800 square feet.
I don't see anything that says exterior.
Oh, understood. Okay. I'm sorry. Under the original, so that ancillary, I still, I still don't know what that ancillary is for. However, if you look at the patron dining for where it says first floor, the original application that went in back when this was first done had 1,300 square feet for the interior. And if you look at this now, it says interior next to the, which is now 1727.
Mm-hmm.
What's missing from this page, which was with the original plan that went in when we originally did the work, there was 550 square feet exterior. That's the patio, the porch, whatever. So that was all included in this primary total square footage of 51 spaces.
So that was 17, 1727 included the patio?
Now it includes the patio, because the patio was exterior square footage, 550 square feet.
Okay.
But not all of that 550 is seating, because now we have vestibule.
Right. But I was just, the point that I was getting at is it's two different parking ratios, and I didn't know if, if the one that was, I believe, ancillary and therefore one, one per 100 versus one for 50, it makes a difference, obviously.
Yeah, it does. I'm not sure. I think maybe, I don't know if the ancillary was...
The ancillary is typically prep space areas and other areas that support a restaurant that's not seating area for patrons.
Okay, so then maybe that, okay, so that would be the kitchen.
Okay.
Right, kitchen.
And then the upstairs, 160 square feet, is like the, I can't think of the word offhand, where they bring the food and hold it before it goes out, or they, it's a, the waitress station, and they have a dumb, a dumb waiter there and everything. So that, that could be what all that is.
Okay.
All right, thanks, John. I was like drawing a blank there.
It's okay. Well, we have a memo in your package. So there was some, the parking in this case was accounted for originally. So they had, they were planning this dining on the porch. It was accounted for. Now they're enclosing it. It's really no change.
Okay.
But there are some changes to the, to the site that we noted. One was there, there's been an additional area of pavement in the back parking lot that was not originally part of the approval, and that probably, I think, we looked back and it has to do with trying to maintain some pervious areas, so, but now that section has been paved. The trash enclosures was relocated to where originally there was a loading space. There's some landscaping that's, that's missing, and the eastern side of the building has some, you know, air conditioning units. So basically what we're saying is, we would be fine with the project moving forward immediately with building permit, but that there's a requirement to get those things on the site plan corrected, you know, by coming back to, either coming back to the board and getting your amended approval, and then by the time CO, hopefully that can be, that can be completed. So that's what we're basically saying.
So we could give him permission to go ahead with the, the building plan and everything, and then he comes back to us with different changes.
Yeah.
So that's where he can get closed in for the winter.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we suggest.
Yeah, I was unaware that they made any of these changes until today, but...
That happens.
Yeah. I mean, the, the pavement's the biggest concern.
Yeah.
Only dealing with the DEP, I know what's involved. As for the other stuff, I mean, unless there's, I don't know if there's an issue with the fact that there are AC units there or, and that kind of stuff, or is it...
It didn't appear to materially affect the operation of the site, so I don't, I don't think there'll be an issue. It's really a matter of, in a case like this, when we go out there and we have to verify that the site was built in accordance with the plan, you know, we really can't do that in this case, because of what, you know, there's certain things that have been moved around.
Sure.
Really just a matter of getting what's out there on the site to reflect, you know, be reflected in the record.
Okay. Well, I'll take a, I'll take a look out there in the next couple of days, see what I can cover, so I know when we get into the, the stuff with the DEP, they're going to need an engineer for that, because that's a little dicey. But, and then if I have any questions, I'll reach out to you guys.
Anything else, John?
No. That was basically it. Straightforward.
Anything for the board?
No, none.
Counselor? All right. So we want to proceed with the letter indicating that they need the, along with the building permit, they need to alter the site plan to comply with the...
Okay. So as long as you can go ahead.
Work. All right?
Okay.
So that'll be a condition of the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how does it work? You guys have a, a letter that goes to the building department and then, I think, gets associated with the permit itself? Like, how does that work? It's just, it becomes a condition on the permit that a CEO, that a CEO won't be issued unless these things get rectified?
Well, yes, because you are changing this approval, because now you're enclosing basically what you're doing. So it should get referred to the focus board at the time of CO. So we're just giving you the notice that it will be a negative response if we're not taking care of the points of business, so...
I'm, I'm just asking.
I don't know if the, I don't know if the, the building department actually will put that as a condition of the building permit.
But so it comes back to you guys.
Yeah.
It comes back to you. All right. Just, because I'm going to have to answer this to them, so I just want to make sure that I have it clear. All right.
That's it.
All set?
All set.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Good seeing you.
Take care. Good seeing you, guys.
Thank you.
So we can go into the agenda if you want. Can I go up or keep going? All right. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have Bank of America. This is a discussion of a lighting plan. Location is 2 Triangle Center.
Good evening. My name is Zach Chaplin with Stonefield Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant Bank of America.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, good.
So we're here tonight for really two main goals. This is for the existing Bank of America at 2 Triangle Center, right up the road. Really, it's, it's two things that the bank is looking to do. The first one is to meet the state requirements for security lighting for ATMs, so that includes both the existing drive-through ATM as well as the interior ATM in the building. And then the second thing is to just upgrade all the existing lighting that the bank controls to LED fixtures that are energy efficient and overall lowers the energy usage and helps the carbon footprint that the bank does. So kind of jumping into the specifics of the project, if you're familiar with the site, there are some floodlights that exist today on the canopy of the existing drive-through. Those would all be removed. The existing light pole that's right near the ATM, there's kind of like four Cobra lights that are on top that kind of extend pretty higher up. Those would be removed. We've replaced those with new LED fixtures that would actually be 25 feet versus the 29 feet that they are right now. In addition, we are proposing one new pole-mounted light fixture at 25 feet, which I realize is higher than what the code allows, and the main reason for that is, again, part of our first goal is to meet the security lighting requirements. Just to give you a little bit more background on that, the state basically kind of has radius for what the light levels need to be from a certain distance from the ATM. They need to be a certain measurement foot candles that we need to meet for security purposes. Couple other things. There's all of the existing canopy lights, both under the drive-through canopy as well as the entrance itself. All those will be replaced with new LED lights, and then there'd be two wall-mounted lights by the building entrance as well, new LED fixtures for the bank. Now, we did have the opportunity to meet with your professional staff, which I thought was really productive. We walked through the plan together, and I understand, coming in with a project like this, it's, can be sometimes challenging to understand the nuances of it, so, you know, we spoke about maybe tapering this back a bit. There are some light levels that John mentioned that are a little bit high. You know, we know we're above the code requirement for the pole-mounted light, so we just had this meeting late last week, so we're in the process, our team, of looking to lower the light, the light poles, lower the color temperature from 4,000 kelvin to 3,000 kelvin, and hopefully, you know, make it a little bit more, I guess, reasonable than, than what was originally submitted. So it is a work in progress, but wanted to come here tonight just to kind of give you the overview of it, and happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board?
None. None here.
I think we understand this code issues and safety.
Did we go through that with Willie?
A field of fog. There's a bunch of banks.
Yeah, there's a couple of banks. We went through it, right?
Yeah.
Anything on your end, outside the working with them?
Well, the gentleman mentioned it, that, you know, we're always concerned with overlighting.
Right.
And so, you know, if you go through and look at some of the numbers, they are very generous, and they said that they built in some, you know, fudge factors to make sure that they are hitting the stuff, and, you know, my comment was, well, that's a pretty heavy fudge factor. So we're working through it together. It took, what's really positive here is that those floodlights are coming down, because they are really harm, you know, hard on your eyes when you're driving by there at night. I think, Willie, I think you mentioned it once or twice in the past. So those will be gone. So it's going to improve, so I think we'll get the lighting levels down, we'll get the color temperature pretty good. The only thing you have to be aware of, there is one light that they are modifying that's 29 feet high. They are right now proposing to get that down to 25, and then they're adding a light fixture that will also be 25, which is nine feet higher than the code. So if you feel okay with that, maybe you want to drive by individually, get a sense of it, and then, you know, when they come back, we'll see what they come back with, but those, that is an issue that in your resolution approving the lighting plan, you'll have to, you know, give them a variance for that.
We are looking to lower that pole to 20 feet, and if it doesn't work, what we might do is do two poles that are lower, and we'll, we'll have both options that we'll look through to see what's better. The other thing important to note is, the site's kind of like on a slope, so from the road, you're actually much higher up, which does help.
Well, we appreciate your work and with the town staff to get this on the right path, and look forward to seeing what you come up with.
Yeah, I think we probably need a little time, so I'm not sure. I know you have another meeting in a couple of weeks, but it might be like a month from now. I don't, is that enough there that I could talk to you offline about?
Yeah, I would...
Yeah, there's, there's three more meetings between now and the end of the year.
Okay.
You have some up for it.
Perfect.
What's frightening is we've got the 2024 meeting schedule in front of us.
It's right around the corner.
Oh, it's scary.
All right.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Next, we have the Penna subdivision. This is a discussion of the proposed subdivision. Location's 3032 Manor Street.
We told him. Yeah, we told him. That's right.
Yeah, that's right. All right. We'll put that off to later, later in the discussion. Number eight on the agenda, we have the Stammer subdivision in Kane Residence. This is a discussion of the proposed subdivision. Locations 535 Jerome Road.
Good evening. My name is Peter Scott. I'm representing the applicant tonight. It is a project that was approved in 2021. It was for another applicant, and subsequently to approvals, which were granted for this project, residential project on Jerome. The property changed hands, and we have a new applicant before you tonight, Michael Kane. He's with me tonight. It's his own residential home to occupy, and what he did is he bought two of the lots of the Stammer subdivision, lots two and three. Tonight, we're looking at lot number two. The project was consisted of an accessway off of Jerome Road, and it extended to a house site, which is shown pretty much in the center of the property itself. The property had an approval from New York City DEP for the subdivision, and in compliance with the previous DEP approval, we've had to build stormwater management structures below the house site, which consists of infiltration bases. In addition, it had an approved septic system, and that's at the south, pardon me, northwest corner, and that remains as was previously approved as well. The only change that really took place is a house site, and the house basically was made smaller than the previous approval. And also, there's a future barn which is proposed, but even though we have two structures now, we're still in a smaller size, which was approved in 2021. This has been to Ibaka, and basically, elements of that approval, which has been restated, is that we have some plantings proposed to mitigate our tree removal. Currently, the site was cleared, in compliance with our previous approval, and, but the buffer plantings were never planted by the previous owner. So in green, I've highlighted before you what's taking place with this particular project. And in that instance, for buffering purposes, we're putting a row of Norway spruce along our proposed roadway, and that's buffering a neighbor to the north. The property to the east, which is lot number one of the Stammer subdivision, and that, and we're proposing a hedge row along the edge of the property line, because our site is much lower than the neighboring property, so that are looking down at us, and the most apropos way to shield our development from the neighbor to the east was to put in a, again, a very dense buffer plantings, a hedge row along the property itself. We have one more thing in this light green little box under my plan, is unfortunately, someone thought it was a bright idea to plant bamboo on the property.
Okay.
And the bamboo has gone wild, and so we, we went to save a tree, and they gave us a proposal on how to remove and mitigate the bamboo. Nevertheless, we had to cut the roots out, put a plastic trench in, and that's in this green spot there. Unfortunately, our neighbor, lot number one, has gotten, and we've done some remediation already, lot number one didn't do any remediation. They got bamboo up on that hill, so we're going to have to work out some sort of arrangement with them to, to prevent the onslaught of this other invasive area onto our property itself. A SWIP was approved again in the past, stormwater management, a septic system, and a house site. Basically, the house is a linear structure which faces north, and, and basically, it's a single-family home site of about 3,600 square feet. And all the coverage analysis were in our submission prior to that, but it's basically a standard of a postmodern colonial home, and it's in compliance with the Health Department and all the other regulations. Every bit of stormwater from the roofs are collected by piping or swales or drainage, and everything goes to the infiltration basin and complying with the New York City DEP. We have a upgraded Health Department permit for the client. We have an updated SWIP approval from DEP, and the only approval at this point in time would be the planning board. And, and Michael just went to Ibaka, and they renewed that approval. That's it.
Great. Did you see this letter from the neighbor?
I did. I have it in my hand.
Okay.
So, so what's interesting about that is, we, our previously approved plan has already addressed that issue with the orientation of our, of our pines, as you can see on the picture. We can't put pine trees along the property line, because you're not allowed to, our approved septic system butts the property line. But, so what we did is, we took the house, made a straight line between the existing house, our house, and put a nice curved tree line versus a, a straight barrier. And so what they're going to see is they're going to see a nice lawn area, and then behind that, there'll be trees, and the trees are pushed far enough away to perfectly screen the house. So you won't see the house, because of the hedges we have already approved on the plan.
Okay.
I think the concern was not the view. It was the wind, right?
Yeah. When you put a, a tree in, in a straight line like this, actually, they're, they're very susceptible to wind, because our wind is in the north-south direction. So if you, when you mount them in an orientation that we have, I'm not saying they're aerodynamic in the shape we've created, but they do basically reinforce each other in this arrangement so they don't break off and, and have issues with that. That's what we came up with. Yeah, we can't do much for them, because they're, they're looking down at us, and that's why we put in the hedge row. Our hedge row will be about 10 feet tall on our property line, and if I put trees on our hillside, from their property to ours, it drops like 20 feet to our house. Our house is actually 20 feet below theirs in terms of elevation from here to here. There's 20-foot drop. And so the, the most prudent way to do a buffer like that is to push your buffering right up to the property line, so that you're getting more bang for your buck. That is, it's a complete buffer versus isolated little tops of trees, and that's why we, we designed it in this manner. And in terms of wind direction, again, that's east. This is west. You don't get that much wind. The wind's more from the north and the south in terms of orientation. So the area...
Can you show, show...
Go ahead.
You show me, you, you got that letter in front of you?
I did.
With the three proposed trees?
Yes.
Where would they, where do they want them on your map?
Well, basically, the Norway spruces they're talking about is they want them right here on the property line. Well, basically, the Norway spruces they're talking about is they want them right here on the property line, below their septic system.
Right, right.
I, when I first looked at it, I thought it was looking on this edge, but it was just noted to me that someone wanted them here. I think they're supposed to be here. They wanted them here.
So that area, is there septic area? Septic field?
It is, yes, right there.
No, no, the neighbors.
Yes, their septic field, yes.
So their septic field has.
Right through our property line, yeah.
And they've got the invasive creeping right up the hill. So that's gonna take over their septic soon.
Potential, yeah. It's pretty good stuff. But again, if you were sitting in their house looking outward, we are 20 feet below them. So what happens is the height point of the mountain's right here.
Yeah.
It all drops to the west. And these lines right here are 10-foot contours.
Yeah.
That's 10, 20, 30, 40. The property drops a distance of 50 feet from our property line to them.
But the area between the Kanes and their house is septic, so it's gotta be cleared.
It does, yes.
So there's nothing there?
Nothing there.
Right. And now you're putting a 10-foot hedge on.
I am doing it right on the property line.
Right. So that, and that'll grow at some point and?
Yeah, it grows much faster than a tree because basically we're getting, we're buying a very high-speed, high-growth potential hedge. What is it? It is a skip laurel. Skip laurel is a very dense hedge, extremely dense.
Its maturity is about 10 feet. It's gonna max out at around 10?
Yeah, it might be slightly higher than that, but we're, I'm quoting 10. Yeah, it's basically, it says 10 to 18 feet tall, I guess. I'm quoting a little outside.
Your purpose for that hedge row, a boundary marker or buffer?
Purely for buffering. I mean, if you can, we didn't want my client looking open his window every morning, looking up the hill and seeing the neighbor standing there.
And I think their concern, just based upon the letter, is that because of their elevation and the winds coming from the west.
Yeah. Winds don't go from the west. North, south.
What?
In this area, anyway. Well.
Are you sure about that?
Pretty sure.
You live there?
No, but I do, I do high rises and we look at the wind all the time.
Did you look at the wind here? I'm just asking.
If anything, a shrub, a shrub row of 10 to 18 feet would be much more of a buffer than isolated Norway spruces.
But I think the spruce was the height because you already described the elevation.
Yes.
That this house, the other house, the neighboring house is higher up. So a 10-foot hedge row is not gonna.
Well, I won't want their wind, but I will basically want their physicality.
Right, and that's the concern they have. That's what we're trying to address, or at least discuss.
What if you, you know, change the species to something like a green giant arborvitae, which will go higher than 18? It can get pretty, it can form a hedge-like screen and at that height, and it can be a pretty dense plant, may also suffice to break the wind up a little bit.
I'd offer something else. I wouldn't mind, I could put a couple of trees in here if they wanted to. I've done a lot of projects, to my regret, using Jowie Greens and 15, 20 years later, the, there's no foliage on the lower section and you have lollipops sticking 40 feet in the air. I think it might be better, if we could intermingle the two, possibly put a couple of, like put two or three along this edge, then if they're so tires, and that would sort of accomplish what they'd like to look at. I'm willing for that. I'm willing to do that.
I have a procedural question. Why was this discussion held with the? I don't know why.
Well, they were looking at architectural view and such like that. We went to them last time.
Clearly outside of their purview to be addressing this and they're an advisory board. So when you say you have their approval, it doesn't mean that it stands here, just so you know.
Yeah.
So I think the discussion we're having now is probably not something that you had there.
No.
And the bigger question I'm asking is the usage on both sides of the property line is the same. It's residential and residential.
That's correct.
And you're being asked to buffer your house from their house?
Yes.
There.
I know.
I have an exceptional problem with that. I mean, other than being neighborly, to go to the extent that you're going, I think is way beyond where you'd expect somebody to have.
It was part of the tree, with the tree replacement issue. That's what we were trying to replace, cut trees, the trees.
But that's not the Ibaka's.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Yeah, okay. So again, as a good neighbor.
Yeah, to go back to the trees that you talked about before.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm at a loss as to what purpose they're serving now, given the concerns about view and wind. Those seem to not be addressing any of those concerns.
Well, we were buffering the neighbor.
Oh, that neighbor?
These neighbors are all, there's houses here.
So you're talking about neighbors on two sides?
Yes, correct.
Oh, okay. I don't know why you're buffering a brand-new house from existing houses.
That's the court, tennis court. So this is all.
Right.
Part of the, their house is here. Part of the reason, the entire reason for the hedge along the border of this property, right? The septic system and the tennis court is also to your client because they don't want to necessarily see some stuff as well.
That's the same thing, yes.
So you would do it anyway.
Yes, correct.
Right. So if you put some different, differing species of trees in there, got a little bit more height, you broke it up a little bit, it may likely help the wind issue and will also satisfy your client's desire to not see too much of their neighbor.
Yes. Yeah, I think we're willing to provide as a condition of approval for three or four trees, this would be neighborly and moving along.
Mr. Scott, you're an architect and an engineer, right?
Yes, I am.
So you're gifted with both trades and licenses. I think this is a nice layout. I think you did a great job mitigating the trees. I do notice the neighbor above you has a tennis court and a septic area that's gotta be completely cleared.
Yes.
Right?
This exists already.
Right, but it's there.
Yeah.
So there's a big open area there and you're putting this hedge there to mitigate the trees and to do what you can to screen the two.
Right.
Yeah, we also have to recall the mitigation.
Right.
Part of this mitigation as well.
So I would make sure you cross the Ts, dot the Is with John and Robin to make sure that that's done. Outside of that, does anybody have any concerns or issues with the proposal?
What do we do next? Do we do a hearing on this or?
No, it's been approved before, so it's, you know, really all the same, minor amendment stuff. The biggest amendment here is that the house footprint has changed and its position is a little bit different, correct?
Yes, I have a comparison now if you wanna look at it. It's right here, I think. And so what we did is we just showed, it's hard to read it, but the red, the blue was original approval and the red's a new approval. And you can see they almost overlay on top of each other. Because this entire project dictated by DDP compliance, if you can. There's so many swales and pipes and everything else they required.
This was the Tesla house before?
Yes, it was, yes. We actually built his house in Florida.
So we did a resolution on the Tesla house. So we do a resolution modifying the last approval with some of the things that you should discuss.
Yeah.
Okay. Any details, John? Counselor? All right, so we'll do an amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion.
Well, we're gonna talk to him.
Are you okay?
What's your schedule? We're gonna talk about the modification to the trees and stuff and then we?
Yeah, I'd like to basically, we'd like to sort of close as we could tonight, the public hearing.
That's up to the board.
And basically start constructing.
You're on the tree board, right? Are you a member of the tree board?
No.
You remember?
He's a member of the neighborhood.
Oh, this is not a, oh, but sorry.
I just wanted to point out some inconsistencies.
I would bring those up. I would bring them up with John and Robin in their office, if you could just reach out.
Are we taking an action today? Motion?
We don't need a motion here, right?
Do we need a motion?
To modify an existing. Yeah, I think you have.
I just made a motion.
Oh, we don't have, we don't have the document ready to.
We're not ready.
How about November 20th?
Pardon me?
November 20th.
Anyway, we could just go do a resolution conditional on that and we can just give it to you if you're in satisfaction of, you know, in between.
But the resolution has to reference a plan that's not in final form, correct? And if there are any inconsistencies, they could be worked out between now and then.
Yeah. Okay.
All right?
Sure.
All right, so you sit down with them, see what, work it out, what the issues are and after that we'll prepare and see you at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
All the best.
Take care.
Good luck for this.
Thank you.
See you soon. Penna Shore? Okay, next on the agenda, we have T-Town Lake Reservation, Lake dredging. This is a town board referral. Location 1600 Spring Valley Road. How are you?
Hi. I'm gonna refuse my, I refuse myself from.
Why is that?
Oh, my God.
Oh, my God. Am I still talking to you?
No. Good evening. I'm Tim Judge with EcoAssessment. That's my consulting practice and I've been hired by T-Town to go through the permitting process to dredge two portions of the lake and to de-water using geotubes and then use that material on-site. We're also looking to put in a culvert underneath Blynn Road that will allow the inflow and outflow pipes from the de-watering, one of the two de-watering sites up on the hill opposite Blynn Road. The other side is the parking lot on Blynn Road. And the culvert will stay after the pipes are removed and it will function as a wildlife crossing so that wildlife can go under the road without having to go over the road and suffer mortality. It's usually in the springtime for reptiles and amphibians that move through that area. So we're looking to dredge right around Wildflower Island. As you're aware, T-Town went through an extensive process rebuilding a wetland just down below from their headquarters and that catches runoff from Spring Valley Road. That has been completed and now we need to dredge around the island in order to reestablish the hydrology of the lake and to protect some rare threatened and endangered species of plants that are on Wildflower Island. We don't want invasives like bamboo from coming in and out competing with, in particular, two species of ground orchid that are found on the island. The culvert will not carry water. It's simply just a passageway and T-Town will take responsibility for maintaining that culvert over time.
The culvert, its original function will be to carry the spoils from one point to the other?
That's correct. This is gonna be done hydraulically and so a hydraulic dredge almost looks like a snow thrower and then it has two augers that come through the center and then a large pump. And it goes into geotextile tubes. They're called geotubes. And that allows the sediments to be kept. The water decants off of the tubes and is returned back to the lake. And so there'll be two pipes going up to both the Blynn Road, the Hidden Valley Meadow, and then also to the parking lot on Blynn Road, which will be temporarily used as the de-watering site.
And so through the culvert, you will be pumping the?
Yeah, it runs through a six-inch continuous well PVC pipe. That will be put in place for the time that they're filling the tubes and to take the return water back and then those pipes will be removed. We looked at it and saw that we were gonna have to trench on Blynn Road in order to carry the pipes and it occurred to us that why not turn that into an animal crossing, a wildlife crossing? There are lots of amphibians and reptiles, small mammals, and even small birds that will be able to traverse Blynn Road underneath the road and that reduces mortality of those species.
Any concerns? No, I think T-Town's reputation about the environment, I'm sure they're gonna.
Over and above.
More capital to the project.
Yeah, we have a turbidity curtain going in front of the dam that's recently been repaired. That's to deal with any turbidity that's in the water traveling that far as that continues on down into the city's, New York City's reservoir system. But we don't anticipate that plume would even get over there. It's not, it's not like a clamshell where you're really stirring up the bottom. It does create some turbidity in the immediate area, but it's not like a clamshell. And the geotubes, we did a project in Sleepy Hollow and the return water that was decanning off of the tubes was cleaner than the water that it was going into, which was the Pecanico River. So it had less turbidity after it came out of the geotubes themselves. We have tested the material under a New York State DEC sediment sampling and analysis plan and protocol. We've given those results over to DEC and it is clean fill. That is how it is characterized.
That's good news.
Yeah, I would ask them to know how much is gonna be removed?
Probably around 7,000 to 8,000, probably about 7,500 cubic yards. The other area that's gonna be dredged and a much smaller dredge is down in the southwest corner where the boardwalk is because the boardwalk is often sitting on the sediments and we wanna make sure the boardwalk is floating.
Is that material gonna be removed off-site or used on-site?
It will be used on-site, especially on the hillside in the Hidden Valley area. There are a few trees that are gonna come out. There's nine trees that have to be removed and they'll terrace that so that there'll be about three levels and they'll put the geotubes in there. The geotubes, after they're de-watered, will be cut open, removed, and regrade that Hidden Valley site so that it actually returns it to a native meadow. So it's gonna be planted with native plants. There are some invasives in there now.
Does it get referred to conservation or?
That I don't know. I think so.
Have you seen the conservation board yet?
Not yet, sir.
Okay. So at this time, what would our?
Well, I mean, they're looking for comments. You know, it's not a lot of planning stuff here, so.
No.
If you have much, you know, I might want to make sure that it went to the conservation board. I think it probably did, but also needs to go to, for the culvert crossing, probably the highway department, make sure they get whatever permits and knowledge and approvals that they need to do, of course.
Right.
But.
Exactly.
Other than that, I don't have too much.
Documentation of the responsibility of the culvert going forward after it's completed?
Yeah.
We can certainly draft something and hand it over.
Just so it's clear as to who's where, who's on first, you know?
And since it's not carrying water, it shouldn't be too much of an issue.
Right.
There's not an active stream right there.
That was really the only concern I had and you guys said no problem. So you really take responsibility for it. It won't be handed as a responsibility to town infrastructure and our highway department, then it's a win-win.
We think so. It's gonna be good for the wildlife.
Looks like a nice project.
Thank you.
I think T-Town doesn't do it that way, right? All right, so we'll wait to hear what the conservation board's got to say.
Well, yeah, we'll make up the drift.
Yeah. You know, talk to the highway department.
Right. We wanted to make sure that we had other approvals and then approach the highway department, make sure that the plans and specifications meet what they want and then we'll go ahead and proceed from there. If you have any questions, my contact information is on the application. Be glad to answer anything.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see Mr. Penna came in. We were waiting on you. All right, we're gonna go back to number seven, the Penna subdivision. Sorry, Michael. This is the discussion of the proposed subdivision. Location 3032 Manor Street. You're on. You're on.
He's over there. Nice to see you all again.
You too.
Yes.
Been a long time.
So we had the opportunity to walk your property this weekend, had a nice tour. At the time, you indicated that you're not interested in moving forward with, I think, a formal subdivision?
Yeah, no, that's not what we're doing at this point.
You're just looking to hear what this board thought about the sidewalk, if I recall correctly?
And the map that our planner submitted, the West M L.
So anybody want to start?
Of the four alternatives you put in, which is your preferred one? Which preferred alternative, if you recall, which map number are we looking at?
I don't remember exactly which one, if Ian showed me the maps. I can tell you which one. Not, I think, Ian, I think that's the one, that's C.
C, okay.
How many are on C? Does nine, the one of this ten?
This is ten. C has two, C has a cul-de-sac off Manor and then another group of houses.
Right, there was the extending Manor due to cul-de-sac and then there was that flagpole thing that somebody suggested might be an issue the last time around. Is it C?
C is ten. Nine plus the existing.
Yeah, I think it was C was the one you liked.
And the existing probably isn't going to stay there.
Well, whether it stays or doesn't, but it's a separate lot is what I'm saying. It's ten lots. So from what I saw, that one I look most favorably upon because it seems the most straightforward. It answers the concerns I would have for access, you know, for emergency access. It seems like it's minimal road to be built, less disruption to the site. So to me, that seems to lay out better as far as I'm concerned.
And again, just to remind everybody, right now, and I watched it this morning, the garbage trucks have to back in. Any sizable vehicle right now has to back in because there's no place to turn around, fire, you know, emergency. With the cul-de-sac and the way that Joe Wren had laid it out, it's big enough for an emergency vehicle to make a U-turn and go back out the way it came in. So school buses, fire, you know, whatever.
If we're discussing layout C, my only concern is more of a legal one that we started to talk about before our meeting started was the question where we visited with your neighbor.
Yeah.
About, I mean, we could process an application for subdivision that included building the road, you're building a road or whoever owns this property, building a road up to that existing non-dedicated road. What happens on the other side of that property line is a separate issue altogether that will not, to my mind, will not be resolved at our subdivision process.
No, it would not be.
So it's my belief that we have the ability to create a road that would come up to that road.
Yes.
And that's as far as we would go. Then the town, because I don't think it's this board's purview, to get into the issue of whether that road gets dedicated or not, that's a town board issue. And it's been offered for dedication from what I understand. But that's a whole separate, just so you're clear.
No, I'm clear.
I don't think you should expect us to address that issue.
I did not want to and I turned seventy-one on Wednesday and my entire life, that road has been an issue. And the town has never wanted it in seventy-one years that I've been alive.
One of our responsibilities in reviewing subdivisions is actually access and making sure that there's legal access to these lots. So that could be a problem as we go along on this. But if you're asking us to say conceptually which plan you should move forward with, we can probably do that, but we can't, you know, this is a conceptual plan.
Right, that's all this.
You know, the detail that we would normally need to move this thing along is not there.
Understandable, which is why I'm not going to, I'm looking for your reaction to this concept.
Can we do that at this stage?
I think you can. You know, some of the things to keep in mind is, you know, there are planning issues. The access is one, right?
Right.
We can go back to some of the subdivisions in recent history that you guys have been dealing with and talk about length of roads without cul-de-sacs, length of roads that are dead ends with cul-de-sacs. This is one of the ones. And given the fact that the existing road there is so narrow and you get to the end and you have no options, that's a problem for emergency access vehicles. So, you know, that's one. The other one is the neighborhood, right? So I think that the neighborhood was built out mostly at one acre lot size. You have a couple now that will intersperse there that are going to be half acre. I think that's a planning question. So while you can certainly have a warm and fuzzy reaction to it, I think you need to stay away from any indication of what the final lot count might be. I think you need to give the caveat that, you know, access and safety and emergency access is going to be a prime mover here as well, things like that. So if the memo is used, you know, to entice a buyer, you have to be careful.
And this was served by public water?
I believe it is.
Yes, it is. The water actually currently extends to our house and to the one I pointed out to you, that yellow house that I said used to belong to somebody named, I forget at this point. But the yellow house, the last house, the water, because there's a fire hydrant there.
Right.
And my...
Damasio?
I'm sorry?
Damasio, that is.
Damasio, thank you.
Damasio.
Good memory.
Mr. Farnham, your memory is better than mine. Yeah, the water extends to that house.
And is it served by public sewer?
My understanding is it is not. No sewer line went through my aunt's property, only the water line. So I think they may have a septic.
All right, and these properties that you're proposing would be on septic?
No, the sewer line runs along the rock wall from east to west, right on the other side of the rock wall.
Just onto your property? Just onto your property or just off your property?
Just over, over the line. Because Manor Street, and I pointed out to you that, remember the telephone pole?
Right.
Manor Street was extended as far as that last telephone pole, late sixties.
Excellent.
Bless you. Throughout the seventies, those last five houses, three on this side, two on this side, did not exist. That was extended in seventy-six and Manor Street came to the rock wall. That's when my aunt bought the adjoining property. We punched through, we had the address changed. She never attached to town sewer nor water. However, the sewer line, the storm drain goes down the hill, so as you're standing there looking at my driveway, the storm drain goes down the hill with gravity. Sewer line, there's a pump station three acres over pumping up that slight grade and certainly the houses on the west side, which as you remember, if you look at them, you look at the roofs, those are pumped.
Yes. The only other thing I think we noted when we were out there, and I think you explained to us multiple times, where your family used to get stuck when they were driving.
On Kipling Drive.
It is a very wet area. So I think that's something that would, you know...
That's going to lack a stormwater system on the road doesn't exist.
I'm sorry, say again?
There is no stormwater system on the...
On Kipling Drive, no, which is one of the reasons why we abandoned entirely.
Right.
But that would not impact this because that's pre-existing and it's got nothing to do with my property. It's, and as that gentleman pointed out, I'm not part of his property. He was very vociferous about that.
No doubt about that. I just noticed other things as we were walking, we saw, I think, water coming out of the hillside. There were certain wet areas, like when we saw the hunting area.
Oh, the one that's on my property.
Yes.
That's on mine, yeah.
So I think that's something that would, and the steep slope, so I think that's something that would have to be looked at.
Right.
But this...
If I may, Mr. Farnham, we, our plan does not go that far.
I understand. It's just things that, when we did the sidewalk, that we saw the...
No, yeah, we all saw it. Robin and I saw the water coming out.
Yeah.
I thought it was a spring, but she corrected me.
For instance, with the steep slopes and the slopes, the cul-de-sac is starting at the high side and near where it will be flat and then it is moving off and down the slope. So there would be a significant amount of grading there in order to achieve, you know, an acceptable code compliant maximum slope of the cul-de-sac. If you flip it, you may do better. So those are the kinds of things that, you know, will be looked at in the future once you get into the grading, which may change the configuration or the lot count. So that's why, you know, you have to be general, pretty general here.
Yeah.
Now, when you say flip it, you mean like option D? Which if you just flip to that, that's about the cul-de-sac on the other end.
Yeah, except that's even further down the hill. So I would say if you're looking at option C and it looks like, you know, the cul-de-sac is loaded from the extension of Manor Street on the east, maybe you should just flip that and so the lollipop comes up that way. So you're not fighting the grade as much.
Yeah, but then you're...
But then you're cutting into a lot, which, you know...
You've got to play with it.
There's always a, you know, domino effect to anything that you do.
I have a question about, you had said to us when we were out there that there are two lots that you have plus the existing house. Is that correct?
No.
Okay. But you had said that there were two lots.
Well, okay. As, remember, we were standing in front, we were standing in front of the house.
Right.
And I said to you that when that was originally purchased, if you go back to the Lee Holmes map of nineteen twenty, whatever it was, that was two lots known as lots nine and ten. My grandfather, however, only got one deed and one tax bill. He did not get a deed for nine and a deed for ten and two tax, it was deeded to him lots nine and ten.
But the point I'm trying to get to, not to cut you off, but just so you understand my point, the two lots that are shown with the common driveway, if you would, those two lots don't make up one lot total, do they? You're abandoning your existing property lines and creating new ones, is that correct?
I don't quite understand the question. If Ian could show me them.
Yes.
So what I was getting at is each lot has to have frontage and you have frontage that exists for one of those lots on, is it Kipling?
So as I'm looking at the map that Ian is showing me, to the east of the existing house, there are two lots.
Right, two proposed lots.
Two proposed, I'm sorry.
Correct. Of a single lot.
I'm sorry.
Subdivided from a single lot.
Subdivided from what was originally two, sold as one unit, but...
Okay, the original subdivision map has that as a single lot and most of the lots, as we said before, that are built on an acre, were about configured and subdivided in that. So what you refer to as nine and ten are across Kipling from one.
No, 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 no. Nine and ten are next to each other. Lot eight is across Kipling. Again, I'm going back to the Lee Holmes map.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to.
That's what I had said originally, but the point I'm getting at is you have existing frontage on, is it Kipling?
Yes.
Okay, so you have existing frontage there that makes that a legal lot.
Makes it a legal lot, okay.
Not illegal, illegal, right, okay.
Illegal lot.
So I'm just trying to, so I'm wondering whether we have two subdivisions or one subdivision because of, you've got three pieces of property that you're looking for a subdivision that encompasses all of that.
Yeah.
But you're going to actually be taking one lot and subdividing it into two and perhaps taking another lot and subdividing it into two and then taking the balance and subdividing it into whatever else there is, as opposed to one piece of property being subdivided into nine or ten lots?
Right now, okay, now I think I understand the question. We own three lots.
Right.
There is the original, which was purchased in forty-seven, which comprised on the Lee Holmes map, which is the reference everybody's been using, lots nine and ten. One year later, so there's the house. One year later, what was behind you, lot eight was purchased. In seventy-six-ish, over the rock wall, down the hill, that is our third lot, according to the town, you know, what is it called, GIS map, okay? So yes, we own three lots. The original lot, and again, I'm looking at the map that Ian got there, the original parcel would be broken into three subdivided, that's the term, lots. Across the road, lot eight would be two. And then I think the proposed six for the area there, not extending downhill, not extending toward the wetlands, keeping it small, keeping...
I think we're kind of saying, at least you and I are kind of saying the same thing, but what my point that I'm trying to make to you is that I don't think that one of those smaller lots, take the smallest one, makes up two of the lots that are proposed here. I think what's done here is somebody took a plan of your entire holdings and made a subdivision map and basically let the old property lines evaporate because you're going to be creating new ones. That seems to me where this went, which is not, I'm not saying it's a problem, I'm just trying to define it.
Mr. Farnham, I'm not the expert. If you need me to get the planner on the phone, I...
Here's the old subdivision. We're talking about ten.
Okay.
That's where the existing house is.
Okay.
That's the proposed two, that's the other proposed two. Everything else is west of that.
All right, so...
So there's two single lots there that are legal lots.
And what I'm saying is, is that lot as it's configured, be able to be within its boundaries divided into two lots?
By square foot of area, yeah.
Oh, okay, that's what I was getting to.
They're roughly close to an acre, I think, so if you get the...
So then my earlier comment, just, I'm not trying to be too specific, but I want you to go away from here, understanding what our process would be, is I think we're looking at a couple of subdivisions, not one.
If I understand, I imagine so. I mean, again, I could get Joe on the phone if you want to.
No, 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 I'm just...
How significant is that at the moment, though?
Well, I think we might be required to have three applications.
But there's no, you know, there's nothing on here. I'm reading, he's asking us for some conceptual reaction.
I'm concerned because he theoretically, or his family, have the ability to sell one of the lots right now. Somebody could walk in with a two-lot subdivision and we would process it.
That's true.
Okay, so I'm just, I don't know where you're going with it. You're asking us for a very preliminary reaction to five or six different plans, which we've done and I'm happy to do. I just wanted, I wanted to find it so that I answer you, at least myself, as best I can. And I think what you're going to be looking at, and anybody who purchases it from you is going to be looking at three individual, maybe just legal subdivisions, it may all be processed at one time as one...
Right, because, I mean, now I understand, this does not constitute one nine-point whatever acre lot.
Exactly, right.
It constitutes three separate lots.
And you were very clear on that.
So a subsequent developer.
Right.
Who's not going to be me.
Right.
Would probably have to go through three simultaneous subdivisions.
Unless you were to sell off something individually. That's what I'm trying to make.
Which I'm not looking to do.
Okay, I'm just, I'm not getting into the weeds, but I want to be thorough and at least...
Bobby spent half my life in the weeds.
So with the proposal, the options we have in front of us, I think option C is the one that we walked and talked about the most?
I think the challenge is, and you're pointing it out, that there are a lot of options. I mean, it's a very developable use of property.
Right.
The grade in some ways works to the advantage in terms of stormwater control going down into the ravine there and an area that could work really well. So that's one of the challenges. There are so many options. You could just sell, you know, subdivide for just the two houses on Kipling.
Right, that's what I wanted to...
Anybody that purchases the property. So, but I do think from a density perspective of the options we've seen, that the option C seems to be the most...
Right.
Are we in a position to favor one option over another?
Well, we could suggest...
Well, we're not...
Just our reaction to it. We're not telling you at the exclusion of any other. I mean, just our reaction at this time.
Yeah.
Counselor, you have any thoughts on that?
I don't think we should favor any particular option. I would not be comfortable doing that because it implies approval of the particular layout that's before us. What I would prefer to do is state some objectives that we might want to see out of an application or three that come forward. I think the major issues that you have to face are which way and how are you going to get into this, okay? And I would like to see that you minimize the use of Kipling because it's a substandard road up until a certain point. And I would rather see you maximize the access from Manor because you can then match two pieces of a town road to the proper standards.
Which, sir, I believe is what we're doing.
So I would rather phrase, but whether you end up with ten or eight or seven or six... six, which way the cul-de-sac goes, I don't know. But I, I think the only planning objective that I see here for me is what I just said. And then the specifics will have to fall where they.
Again, as I said to you at the, at the last meeting that I attended, which I believe was September, um, I went with this because it was the least, this plan, again, Ian, was it map C?
Okay.
Because number one, it had the least impact on the area. It left the most woodland adjacent to the town park. It did not get entangled with or any way encumber or get involved with either Kipling or Teconic Woods. As you saw Teconic Woods, it's, it's, it's almost a run, you know, run out. It's, it's, it's not even a goat trail. The plan we put forth kept these things in mind. And I certainly understand the board is not in a position to say, hey, Bob Penna, we give you your approval, go sell this. That's, I, I know that's not your, your job, your purview or what you'd be, be comfortable doing. I was merely looking to say, in, in consultation, obviously, with, with our planner, um, this seems to me to be a viable thing to do with that property. And if it was terrible, I'm sure everybody would tell me it was terrible. If I came in and said, ladies and gentlemen, I don't want to try to shove fifteen houses in here and two of them are gonna lay on their side because I can, I can fit it in, you'd react badly and I expect you to. I came in with something, I hoped that would at minimum, say, be something, we'd be comfortable looking at that in future, future development. It's not terrible. Maybe all we, all we get out of it is, Bob, it's not terrible. I don't know. I mean, I, I can't tell you what you can do or you can't do and.
I think Bob, Bob, he had put it, put it and said, uh, that the property is developable or highly developable. You could, you could say something, you know, you know, without committing to anything. I think that's the concern from this.
Because a future developer is gonna come in with his or her specs and say, here's what we want to do. And maybe they're gonna come, come and try and, come in with eleven. All of the pre-existing issues would still exist. Plus, he'd be trying to squeeze in one, one or two more than I was talking about. But I'm just trying to get a sense of what is within the realm of neighborhood comfortability, town comfortability. And that's all I was hoping for.
Every action that this board takes is subject to some level of review, okay? We're not here to guess. We're not here to advise you as to what the best plan might be. I outline my own concerns about what objectives I would like to see a subdivision in this area accomplish. You want to come away with as specific an idea as you can so you can market it, I get it. But I'm not in a position to say, yes, C is good because it's got ten lots and that's where you're gonna go.
No, 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 sir, no, no, no. I'm not looking for you to tell me, C is great, Bob, go with this.
And, and what else can we do?
You can tell me what objections you might have to ten and then.
I keep, no, I don't think we can do that.
You can't do that until we know the project.
We can't make arbitrary or capricious or, or random or unsupported decisions without assessing the environmental impacts of what we decide, okay? I don't believe we have sufficient information. I could say, yeah, if you were coming back to me later on with something, I would say, don't bother with A, B, and D. You know, get as close as you can with C, but we gotta see the impacts of even C.
Obviously, obviously.
So that's, that's my personal, uh, opinion.
I think there's a lot to look at, especially.
Slopes.
Slopes, the wet areas.
Yeah.
Seeps coming out of the hill.
And access.
Any other thoughts?
I think our work here is done.
All right, so it sounds like we don't feel comfortable making that kind of a determination without more information.
Right.
I don't think you're gonna make any determinations. And I, I think the, what I hear from you, you could probably say that, you know, at the most, option C seems to be the most promising.
Yeah, right.
But I don't think you can go any further than that because.
I wouldn't ask you to.
As you, as you, as that process unfolded, you may find out things about option C that are yet uncovered.
Right. No, we wouldn't.
This is Aaron's point, some of the, so if you're thinking that the list of things that we go through are things like access, emergency vehicle access, all that, grade, stormwater treatment, impact on the neighbors, those are the things that really, and of all the options, the one that seemingly is best, but we wouldn't know until we have a final plan in front of us.
Well, obviously, we don't like specifics. And that's why the process is pre-preliminary, you know, et cetera.
We don't know where particular wetlands might be or, you know.
Understand.
Native American remains, you know, you know. So I think we're done.
Okay.
All this to do, anything in this.
What do you want to do?
I don't know.
Wish him good luck.
I mean, these layouts, but I, I didn't, there's too many variables.
We have to, Rich, we don't have to do anything.
No.
No, wish him good luck and let's go Jets. Let's go Jets.
So at this point, we're not comfortable making any kind of recommendations. Uh, I think this, a lot more information that I think if you talk to John, Robin, and your professional, maybe they could take a next step or look a little bit deeper into it. But at this point, we're not comfortable making any decision. So what I would suggest is you meet with Robin and John and bring your professional in and maybe work through it. But at this point, we're not comfortable making a decision. Okay?
Okay, Josh.
All right, thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, uh, number ten, three thousand Navajo. Three thousand Navajo Road. This is the town board referral of a rezone. Oh, no.
He doesn't ask for us to give him the decision.
Look at the. He was looking for.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Mike.
How's everybody?
Day before election.
I am. I figured the last guy was gonna be quicker. He's just stressed out, he's just driving and everything. Anyhow, um, we have an application for the town board on the, this property was located between Navajo Road and Route Six N at the far northeast corner of the town of Yorktown. It's probably the last property in the town of Yorktown. It's, um, we have a layout of approximately two hundred and fifty, fifty, two, fifty-four units at different locations on a fifty-acre site. Just trying to give you this, give you the overviews. I know we, you had Dr. Phil's plans sent to you on Friday. There's, there's basically three different locations where they're gonna be units. Three different locations where they're gonna be units. Each, each of the locations, probably we will have some different architectural treatment in order to mix it up. We have, uh, the, the, there's a lot of focus actually on the architectural treatment of, of the proposed residences. The, uh, big, uh, the benefit to the town i- i- in this project is that we're looking to run the sewers down Six N. We have an extension, um, from Six N to, uh, down, um, all the way to, uh, it's, uh, Hill Boulevard. So this would be the route to be, uh, this could be the route to sewers, which is much needed up in that area. The, this property has been a subject of a lot of review in the past. You may, may not be familiar with it, but most of you, I think, are, as known as Navajo Fields. It's been looked at, studied, uh, ad nauseam almost, uh, in terms of laying out the wetlands. Everything is out, every, all, all proposed constructions outside of the wetland areas, outside of the, uh, the setbacks as well. This piece of property has been reviewed by DEC in regard to those, specifically to the, as to the wetlands. It's, will have two, uh, avenues of access, one went from Navajo Road and one from Six N. The property is presently zoned, I believe it's R one twenty. R one eighty, all right. So this would be, uh, looking at the different zoning districts that are now on the books. And probably in order to accommodate this project, we'll have to, the town will probably have to enact a new, uh, section of the code with its own unique area and bulk requirements, setbacks, intensity counts, although this would be very similar to what is available under the R three. We look at this project as having one of the major benefits to the town is that this project actually has sufficient critical mass in order to allow for the investment into the complete corridor, the Six N corridor, which has been problematic for the town now for decades. I'm sure everyone on the board is very familiar with the Six N corridor. It's basically made up of very small lots that are a throwback from when it was a bungalow lake community. There is problems, uh, because everything up there is on septic and the lake is under the process of eutrophication, probably more from its, in a, uh, from the inundation of, of failed septic systems. The big problem and the big challenge, um, of that corridor always has been that because it's such all small lots, um, it's very difficult to, to get a redevelopment of, of the corridor because the expense, just in the soft cost of going through an approval process, uh, prohibit any type of real redevelopment of the property because that, those soft costs probably outweigh the value of the property in and of itself. Uh, I, I know in, in, in the past, when it was town supervisor, looking very carefully at what we could do to kind of revitalize that corridor. And the problem always had been that there's a very small lots that have, that, so you have very, you have splintered ownership. You don't have anything that's a, a sufficient critical mass to make the investment into the corridor that could actually turn it around. We believe that this project, what it will do is it provides that critical mass to have the investment in the corridor. And I think it provides a very, uh, exciting kind of opportunity for the town to revitalize that whole Six N corridor and, and I see, uh, I see all the lake area, um, by bringing down, bringing the sewers down to Hill Boulevard. It's a major, major, uh, infrastructure improvement and much needed one. Uh, I think it also gives an opportunity, if the town is so willing and maybe state or county, to start to invest in the streetscape along that corridor as well, um, at the same time that the, the sewers are put in. But, uh, I think the big impetus for, for real serious consideration of the project is the fact that it will sewer that entire area. As far as the density, density is very consistent with the existing R three. Actually, it's very consistent with the entire neighborhood. If you go look at the density in the surrounding areas, um, this is, uh, fifty acres total, I believe, I believe. So, um, we do have a, a schematic of, of, an outlay of the areas, I haven't figured it up, but areas of what the existing density is around in that neighborhood. But basically, if you do the calculations, this is pretty much right on target with what is actually existing. And that's it, because there is multifamily in the area and there's also small, a lot of small lots that throwback from, from the area was a bungalow community. So essentially, um, that is the, the basic overview of it. I have our engineer here who can act, answer more technical questions for you. And what we're here to try to start to get your, your feedback in, in terms of dividing the town board on, in the zone of this property. And again, I believe it's going to need, it's going to need a, a draft of new provision of the code, um, to actually, uh, because the existing code, uh, we've brought up again some, some of the area of bulk instructions that probably will look at the ability to deploy it as, uh, totally conceived. But I think we'll start to go around with, with these gentlemen and just basically see what concerns or questions you have, uh, the engineer here, obviously, someone who we, we are, who we get quite, quite often as we move ahead. But conceptually, that's essentially it. The number of units, acreage, which we have the density, um, um, mostly, again, all the areas that are looking to be built upon are outside of the wetlands and, and are outside of the, uh, applicable setbacks as well. So we're using airplanes, uh, for development. It anticipates continuing recreational use. There will still be commercial recreation uses as part of the project. And if, if possible, we'll have to look at a small commercial footprint along Six N, uh, which would, uh, above the entranceway to the residential development, because it's a real estate property. Some of the other advantages of the property, uh, development is that it's basically all this. There's enough, there's not gonna be any visual impacts to, to basically any property you have to really be on the property to see anything. So it's really a self-contained in that, uh, in, in that respect. And, uh, a- a- again, um, the outfit is really discussing architectural treatment. It's not gonna be just boxes, um, or the thing it's going to be, you know, with the bulk upscale or these, you know, for some, you know, it's gonna have actual, you know, build architectural plan for each of the buildings. And I think that's a very important aspect of, of the project that this deck. Uh, we've done preliminary traffic studies. It's, uh, our opinion that, that the traffic impact is probably nominal. I think there's a lot of, I currently believe with presidential units that they generate a lot of traffic. They really don't. And, and you could set from those, no, from your experiences, Jefferson Village, I think it's got fifteen hundred units in Jefferson Village. And, uh, it really isn't much of it in traffic impact, uh, you know, off, coming, pulling out of the Jefferson Village. And I think the same would be set to the intersection of Lieutenant and Six as well, where it is, uh.
Hmm? The athletic fields in Dome. The athletic fields in Dome.
Yeah, and we're also maintaining the athletic field, the athletic fields in the, uh, front of property as we come up from our, about Six N, which is in this area. So it's going to be on site, we're, we're maintaining a lot of the existing recreational facility that exists plus an indoor recreational facility which will be, uh, accessible right now. That's essentially where we are. Again, it is, obviously, it's a lot of detail, our engineering, uh, deep, deep diving as far, you know, as we move along. Uh, but, uh, I think at this point, we're mostly looking for your feedback as we move ahead with this, this is the application of it. So we're very, uh, firm about our numbers and, yeah, actually, you know, those numbers will, uh, are necessary in order to be able to create and, and put in the infrastructure. But I think we'll benefit all the time.
You're up against the Putnam County line at, at the top and against the town of Somers to the right?
Uh, yeah, I think, I think it does both against both.
So what, what is the parcel that's below in that lower right-hand corner?
Down here.
No, 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 off, off of your property, right where your hand is. No, to the, right, the lower right-hand corner. There, no, no, keep going, yeah, right there.
Oh, well, that's gonna be in front of you too, and I think, that's, I think, what that's for, for a transfer, interior transfer station. That is, that's more condo. That is, that's North Tondo property. It had been, there was a, there was a commercial subdivision of that property in the past. I think it created, I think there was speed building pads that were laid out. It's, I know there's wetlands, it was a big issue on that property, there's streams that traverse this property as well. And I think you do have application or, or maybe you don't, but I think you do. I think that they're looking, AAA looking to build a transfer station.
And who is, who is?
We, which quite frankly, you know, we believe is just, you know, it's something the town really should consider not allowing. This is, it's not, it's not appropriate for that site and it's certainly not, you know, figured. We're trying to, we're trying to create a real, you know, HBO residential on-site community up there and we're taking this, which is, you know, right now for the town, you've got a lot of these things coming in. You do have one on the up, on the bookend of six N, which is up by my tractor track and stuff. And you have, you have all the applications in front of you, you know, it is, it's the trend at this point to do these type of developments. Single-family home developments aren't, aren't in place, they're going to be expensive. So this is the kind of, and you have certain, certain properties out there which, you know, what, you can have a mixed reaction, but this one, quite frankly, is, is really well-suited for what we're looking to do because, again, traffic impact's going to be minimal, visual impacts are going to be nonexistent, the density is, is enormous amount of, what, the green space that, that, you know, is going to be, you know, post-construction. They're going to be able to address both your, your stormwater issues up through that corridor, which are, have, are critical. You're also going to be able to provide a sewer line, which is also, which is also critical for the redevelopment of that whole corridor. And I think if the town has some wisdom, of course, when we get involved in there, I think that you can really actually, once that construction begins, that construction gets put into place, that we, you know, start to look at possible, or the town should look at possible streetscape construction through there, which is a traffic quieting, that requires traffic and, and is, again, one of the things that we feel is better to that whole corridor.
Good question. The fields that you say are going to remain, were those part of the original approval, John?
I'm sorry?
The fields that are?
Yes.
That was part of the original approval like that?
That field was not.
So that field and the field towards six N, was that part of it?
I think this was, this was used for socks.
So I remember the application, I'm trying to remember that, I thought that area was, wasn't that regulated by D E C?
Yes. It was not, my recollection, it was not part of at least the original set of approvals. I don't know that it was ever approved, you know, or the original approval was mended to include those. I don't think so, but I'd have to go back and check the record, so. But D E C has been looking at it and I don't know if they've finished up what they were doing, but.
He's an engineer.
Yeah, the, D E C signed off on it, they, I remember as much. Our last, our last environmental consultant had an issue about that plant socket.
But was that, the question I'm asking, those fields, were they part of the original site plan?
Yes. We spent ten years with D E C.
Not D E C, not D E C.
No, they're on the town.
You said everything there was, as per the town, of your town, I'm not worried about the D E C. So John's telling me no. And I'm recalling the site and I don't remember.
When I was council supervisor.
I'm not talking about D E C.
I'm telling you, when I was council supervisor, it was back and forth, what was there, what was approved, what wasn't approved, everything else. I know we finally signed, in a bunch of meetings, settled all issues as to what was allowed and what wasn't allowed. This was a field that was to be a socket here. These fields, this area here, this area here.
What about the one right towards six N?
We're getting done.
No, no, the one toward?
This, this.
Yes, right in that corridor.
But we will go into the record and just get you that answer and we'll all be in agreement.
Right. But I seriously planned and I signed the supervisor to settle all.
There was a lot of, a lot of plans. Let it be said, there was a lot of plans.
Mike, for those fields, those fields, is there parking? Were people that are attending events in those fields?
Yeah, that's the, you can trust the parking.
We're currently developing this concept and, sorry, good evening, Rich Williams with Insight Engineering. And our intent is yes, we're still developing this concept. Right now, we haven't shown individual parking for those fields, but we're looking at alternatives. We're also looking at ways to adapt this plan based on some feedback we've gotten from the planning department to date about how to make these two uses more congruent. You know, we want to create a little bit of separation between the residential component and the recreation component. We did hear loud and clear from the town board that maintaining recreational fields is an important aspect of the project that they want to save. So we have a little bit of challenge ahead of us on, on making these two separate uses not coexist on a property. And part of that is going to be adding.
Those are on D E C regulated areas, right?
Correct.
So as the engineer in that area, and I'm, I'm struggling to recall, because I remember there was back and forth about it.
There was back and forth. The original plans did not include that. Subsequent plan, it certainly was discussed, we knew that there was things taking place. In fact, the original plan restricted the use of the drive from six N into the site for the fields. That was the original plan. Now, there's been stuff that happened and I will really, in order to speak factually, I'll have to go back into the record.
But the sites where the buildings were far enough.
Right, but it's one, one large site.
And that was, it's different between kind of this interior recreational structure as opposed to this field. This, this field here was a, it was all, it was all host on, it was riding, so it was always, it's not worth it, was it? It was a, it was a stable, it was on there that used it for, you know, for, for.
But you're coming to the, you're coming to the town with an approval, you're looking for rezoning.
Yes.
And you as the engineer, that, from what I see here, all that is in a D E C regulated area. And is it legal?
Mr. Ch, you are correct. And the applicant has been working with the D E C. They've recently completed requirements of an order on consent to have what is on-site today permitted.
But that was never permitted from the town?
I think we heard from Mr. Teeger that, and Mr. Grace, that we believe it was, but there's some research to be done. And I think it's a fair question.
I won't be the D E C, but I know.
Alright, so I, I hear you and you've had, you did your presentation and we appreciate it. So I'm asking the board now, looking at this, so we're looking, the town board is looking for referral and rezone. So what are our tasks here at this point?
We have referral on the project, including the rezone, so it's a little bit of both. So you got to figure out what the proper secret pathway is, what the general layout of the project is like. There is certainly a community benefit in the sewer going all the way down through Jefferson, old Jefferson Valley, let's call it, which is, that's a big help and boon, I think, to the town. So there's a very big positive net to it. But of course, you also have to look at what the impacts of the project are, right? So there's D E C wetlands there, there's parking issues, there's issues between having a full-blown tournament there when people are living there, are they going to be happy with that, you know, those tenants? All of those planning issues come into play. Do you need to get behind them right away? I don't think so. I think you need to do the 10,000 square foot, 10,000-foot-up look to the town board right now, which is about what the, what the pathway is, what you think your involvement should be. The general layout and configuration and density of the project as it's laid out with the recreation, you know, those broad brush.
I have some concerns. Certainly, this project brings its whole host of environmental issues that have to be dealt with, and I'm confident that that process can take place at the proper time. But I'm more concerned with the Jefferson Valley area as a whole because you've got a big project on the western side of that, of East Main Street, which, town board, I think you did a pos deck on that one, am I right?
Yep.
Okay. This one is the other side, as you said, Mike, it's a bookending, the valley up there. Then you say you've got some potential projects coming in around it. And I caution the board that maybe that needs a holistic or more broader approach to this impacts of this project when you tie it in with everything else that might be going on over there. And I don't know how we can best accomplish that.
This happened down at the BJ's, the Walgreens across the street.
Yes.
Yeah, that whole area. There were different projects that all were kind of lined up at once. And if they're talking about a carding area there, have you seen that? That they're proposing a transfer station?
They're proposing a recycled station. So the operation, I haven't seen anything other than have one initial meeting. The description was it'd be, you know, on that long leg, so far away from Route Six as possible. There'd be a long, fairly large rectangular building that all of their recycling trucks would come in, they'd offload the recycling, it would be sorted, and then it would be taken out to other points where it was, where it's either sold or shipped overseas. There will be also a section of the building that recycles construction debris, so in other words, in the, in the bins, you know, the thirty yard trash bins. They separate that stuff out, there's money in it.
Enclosed?
It can be sold, that will all take place inside the building. The other part of the project is that AAA has an obvious household waste operation here.
The food scraps?
Well, yeah, you know, out of the, out of regular household. None of that will be transported to this site. However, the trucks that do that work will be housed here on this site and operate from there. So they will, guys will come in the morning, jump in their truck, go do the routes, take the household waste down to the transfer station, I think, at Charles Point, and then come back and park for the night.
So you're talking about a sanitation yard?
Yeah.
It sounds like a Murph almost over there.
Yeah, whatever it is, I mean, it'll be a significant operation.
Well, I, I agree with Aaron. I think we got to really take a look at what's coming.
I think, I think, Aaron, you're spot on on this. I actually think that, you know, Sean's pointing out that.
I don't think we should burden an applicant about something that might come in the future. Just think of the Home Build, it was an albatross around everybody and it never came in, it never came in my lifetime or anybody else's lifetime. It should, it should not be, the project should stand on its own.
Well, Bill, I believe this one will. I think when you, when you do actually move that over to, I think it will help our project rather than hurt it. I think when you start to look at the merits of this project as opposed to what else is up there, I don't like to talk ill about anybody else's project, I think that the one up on Contractors Register has some merit, but what does it give to the town? I don't think the town's getting much of anything out of it other than density up there. It's got a complicated, you know, access point to six N and six, that's going to look like Halix Mill and thirty-five, where you have this kind of, you know, triangular access point of, so, you know, I think there's issues there. Plus, I don't, you know, if the town were getting a contribution of some kind to that whole corridor, I think it may be worth, has some merit. I think on the other hand, when you, when you actually take a look at that whole corridor, if you go from, if you go from the deconic to the town line and you start to take a deep dive into what needs to be done through that corridor in order to make it viable, vibrant, because I think it's a beautiful corridor, I think Osceola Lake's a gem, and I think it's a beautiful resource. We've talked to, we talked to George Roberta, who owns the biggest piece on Osceola Lake as far as joining in with us on an application for enhancement of the whole corridor. I think when you take that viewpoint, that bird's eye viewpoint, you're going to see that the merits of this project, the merits of this project are going to become more and more evident. And to your point, I think the onsite issues are different. They are, is the D E C, D E C very familiar with the property? They're met with it in numerous times. There is definitely uplands, there is wetlands, there's setbacks. All that's been very carefully, the, the, the site was processed for domed recreational facilities.
The domed area, but we're talking about the D E C area. So what I would suggest at this time is we let John go back and work with the engineer to look at what was originally approved, what is out there, what is going on with the D E C, because we have no idea. And we'll start formulating a memo and maybe we talk about it after we see what you found.
Yeah, I just, I only caution on one thing, and I know, because this property has a history. I have to understand, this is a whole new concept, a whole new application. As opposed to what was there in the past, I don't think what was there in the past was much different.
But we're looking at what was originally approved, right? So give us the opportunity to go back, take a look at what was approved, where we are with all the regulatory bodies. We'll weigh the merits, we're going to ask John to get us a list. Might be different opinions about the rest of the area, but we'll see what's coming on in the rest of the area because that's going to impact traffic. This is going to generate traffic, right? So these are the things that we have to look at. So we'll see what was originally there, we'll get a sense of what else is going on around in the area.
Yeah, I've got a couple more questions.
Please.
What is, what is contiguous to the property? You answered my question, what is to the Route Six side of things? What is to the east?
To the east is Whispering Pines.
That's their yard, it's over the property line.
And I think, I think where AAA is coming from, is that Whispering Pines does have a, it has a material yard up on the plateau. I'm going to suggest, because, you know, that if you are going to get back to town board on, on this project, that you also consider commenting as to what's going to occur with AAA, because I think doing the transfer station.
I don't want to get off into that topic, I want to finish my question so I get an answer. I'd like to know, I wanted to know what was to the Route Six side and I wanted to know what was to the east, because my concern is that those units that are at the end of a very long cul-de-sac have one means of egress in and out of there. That's a concern to me from a, just from a layout.
Right.
So I would be interested in knowing if there's a possibility of another way out. And Whispering Pine is property there that at great, you could get out. I know it's in another town, it's another ownership, or the property in the front, but you're dead end, I don't know how many units are in those four buildings, but that's a concern from a planning standpoint for me. And I don't expect an answer.
But the, that butts on the Ton, that butts on the Ton Door property, which is three, I think it's three lots. My understanding is those three lots were under consideration for a solar farm, and I think that either AAA bought them or the contract man, Deanna, for this, so they have to get back out through the six N. I just don't think it's a good use.
Oh, so you're saying you could.
That, that property may be in front of you at some point for something, but I don't, I don't think a transfer station is what you really want at that part.
My other question is, I haven't heard any definition of the sewer line. Is it going to start at your property and go towards the old Contractors Register?
No, and at Lee Boulevard.
And at Lee Boulevard. Is it anticipated that anybody in Putnam County or Somers could tie into your end of the sewer line?
No.
Remember what happened up on the hill behind it? A lot of properties were taken out of the Peaksville Sewer District many years ago.
Right, right.
But not on the bottom.
Right, but it.
That's a big benefit.
You have, you have, I think there's, there's three and a half acres of vacant land on the north side of six, which is owned by McMullin, I believe. And then there is, after that, there is a bunch of very small sliver lots, all of which are, you know, I, you know, look, I don't, I don't, obviously are not being put to great use because you can't be sued. The idea is that you actually, if you're ever going to, you may not ever want to change what is there, but I think when you take a look at what's there, a lot of those properties are going to disrepair, are not going to be revitalized because the expense of doing it, it doesn't, it doesn't merit it because of the end values. You have houses all along that area which are even, again, completely dilapidated, the lots are being dilapidated, and you only go. the process of being dilapidated, and, and you're only going to start, and I've talked to John about this years' head, even when I was supervisor, anything that, but the fact that to master plan the area, so it be plug-and-play, but you needed the infrastructure.
I know.
And this actually is a project that's gonna provide that.
It's not the... That's clear from your presentation.
And it stresses, because it's an opportunity, this only comes around very, you know, it's gonna come around once, and that's it.
So getting, getting back to my question, the, the western end of the sewer line at Hill Boulevard will tie in to the sewer main that's in 6N and go towards Peekskill?
No, it goes, it runs down 6N, goes to...
He's shaking his head, yes.
Goes to Seola.
Turn around, Mike.
All right.
From Hill, from Hill Boulevard. From, from Hill Boulevard, ultimately, yes, it makes its way down to the trunk line that goes to Peekskill. As part of this application, there will have to be a petition to expand the sewer district, not only to the town, but then ultimately to Westchester County. So there's, there's a lot more discussion to be had.
So the capacity in Peekskill has to be determined by us?
That plant runs, well, that plant runs at just over 7 million gallons a day, and it's a 10 million gallon a day plant.
But the answer to my question still is yes, correct? We have, we have to verify the fact that that can serve your needs?
Well, yeah.
No, they may not, I don't disagree, but I'm saying one of our jobs is to make sure that that's, or one of Dan, we're gonna tell Dan to do that.
It's, it's, it's actually, yes. So you would do it as part of your district, but the county actually controls that plant, and it would ultimately be the county that determines the capacity based on a petition.
Right.
So we recently completed all the improvements involved in place, so...
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to get my head around where this line is gonna go, where it's gonna start, where it's gonna terminate, where everything is gonna go to.
Yep.
Just so I understand it, okay. So it's gonna come down...
It's gonna come down 6N.
6N to Hill Boulevard.
And then tie into the existing infrastructure, and then it'll ultimately make its way towards Jefferson Valley to the intersection line.
Okay.
Towards the mall.
Rich, one comment, I was, there's obviously a lot of discussion, a lot of benefits. The town board is specifically asking us to comment on rezoning.
Right.
So do we have any objection to this?
Well, you said the plans too came to us?
The project has come to you. It's not even clear as to what the path for the rezoning will be, right? So they could petition to get into the existing R3? I don't know if that's the proper thing to do. The discussions that we had had kind of concluded that there should be a, a new section written that better fits what this project is actually about. So, and I think that had to do with some of the existing density requirements that are in the R3 that would present problems for this project as currently proposed. If you change those requirements in R3, then you have all of these old R3 developments that now don't have that restriction any longer, which seems to be somewhat of a, you know, a little bit problematic as well. So it's kind of those kinds of things. So I think part of your comments to the board should, you know, possibly give some direction in that regard.
In that regard, looking at the existing zoning districts that are out there, I think this, again, this is another opportunity to examine what's been on the books for 50 years, that's really not working there, because, you know, this is, you're getting to a different, you know, age where it's different type of housing, needs and concerns and demands, and we think that this, and with the technology that's out there, so then you say, et cetera, et cetera, we think it can make this thing work. But I think the, the good thing to be to take a deep dive into actually the code as well, and so we would be asking the town board and you guys to, 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 to go down that journey, to, to, to comment on it.
Does country, I mean, commercial recreation, is that a current zone?
Yes.
That's what you asked for in your cover letter.
It doesn't work.
Doesn't work.
Yeah. The bottom line is, we must be go through the whole thing, if you really want the project to be, if you want a good project, you want a project that works, a project that's good not only for the, the, the project itself, but for the community at large, I think you're really, the, the homework is mulling up your sleeves and digging down, creating new language and code, to accommodate. I think that's, because otherwise, otherwise you constantly tie yourself into a present and it just doesn't work. It just, the honest answer is, it doesn't necessarily work.
So then how do we comment?
Well, does the entire parcel have to be rezoned?
I don't know.
I mean, you, you've got the areas kind of segregated into sports and athletic fields and then the residential.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's that difficult to task. I think that if, if, if it's conceptually, there's buying, it's really easy to do. I think what you, I think, again, we're looking at a prioritized view. If, if conceptually the project has merit, if conceptually you think it should be something that should move ahead, I think we can make it work. The fixed points, the, what you have to understand, and what are the fixed points for us, and what are the fixed points for you? The fixed points for us is, is a certain amount of density, because it needs a certain amount of physical damage. The fixed points are that, you know, the sewers are actual necessary, and there are alternatives to this property, other than going down 6N with the sewer, but the community contribution would be that. And the thing is, that presents an opportunity, it's an opportunity to the town. It either makes, takes use of the opportunity, or forfeits it.
All right, so we have a lot to think about, we've got a lot to mull over, we'll have John start working on some ideas, and I'm sure he'll reach out to you.
Yeah, and we'd love to see you handle this as soon as we can.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. Good luck. Good seeing you. All right, next but not least, we have the town board referral amending Chapter 275, Vehicles and Traffic. John, are you presenting for this one?
I wasn't, wasn't planning on it, but...
You're passing it to Ian?
Passing it to Ian.
Congratulations. You're on.
I didn't see anything.
Yeah, it, it's really a response to some of the issues with ATVs and so forth. So it expands that unregistered motor vehicle portion, provides for a pound, but I don't, I don't see any planning issues.
Okay.
I didn't. I don't know if so, anyway.
I got a question. Unregistered vehicle. If I have an old car, and I used to collect those cars, on my property that's not registered, would that come under the law and be unlawful?
Right now, depending on the number of vehicles you have parked outside of a building on your property, yes.
Okay, so let's, theoretically, a house don't have a garage. He has three kids, they all got cars, he has a car, there's four cars. Is that illegal?
Well, they would be registered, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, they would be registered.
Yeah, so, no, that wouldn't be illegal.
Okay.
I don't think.
I just don't want somebody coming onto somebody's property and saying, you know, you got an unregistered vehicle, and you're against the law, and then total vehicle law give the guy a fine, that's...
Well, there are, there have been instances in town where someone will have a collection of unregistered motor vehicles parked on their property, and at some point, that becomes a property maintenance issue, and it's illegal.
Yeah, well...
If there's one, you know, a...
Currently, it's illegal.
This is limited to self-propelled vehicles, not get, not cars.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
You're talking about, you're talking about the, the...
Bicycle, motorcycle, ATVs.
Not, not...
They should be registered.
Self-propelled.
You got anything you wanna...
Well, look, you know, I have received some concerns from some constituents that it's a little too restrictive, and that we're reacting. I don't necessarily disagree, but I don't necessarily agree with that assessment. There are some provisions in the law that allow for people that have disabilities to get approval. One of the concerns was, you know, how do older people who are using, they use e-bikes, you know, to make the, you know, the biking environment, you know, alternative methods of travel, that can't ordinarily pedal a bike? How do they do it? There are provisions in there that will allow them to, you know, register a bike. Some people had concerns about the bike, the bike path, you know, about allowing, because it would, this would disallow e-bikes on the bike path. So some people had concerns about that, but the other concerns are that, you know, the bikes, I think there's a state law that says the bikes can't go more than 20 miles an hour, but some of these bikes go faster than that. And there have been a few, a few too many incidents with the bikes, with the bikes and, and stuff that's happened in town. There weren't particular incident that happened with the gentleman, it's to you. So that's, those are the concerns, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm waiting for the public hearing. I'd like to hear the people and their concerns about this, and I'd like to hear, you know, the positives from people. I'm sure there's going to be a packed room tonight. That's where it's at.
I, I think it's a little broad, and I'm reading it, it says, basically it says you can't have an electric bicycle on any streets that's, that's not registered. Do you have to register those things in the first place? Electric bike?
Ordinarily, you don't have to register.
So you're basically saying to people who cycle in town, that they cannot get an electronic assist on a cycled bicycle and use it in town?
If they require an electronic assist, they'd be able to get special consideration. That's what it says in the law.
They, I don't require it, I just want to use one, because I can't, according to this, right?
Right.
So I would, I would want to bring that out.
I think anything that's on a public vote, that's able to go down a public vote, should be licensed and insured, but that's, regardless of what the vehicle is. It could be a motor school roof.
But the state law requires, I believe, that if you're 15 or above, that you have to have at least registered. In other words, you have a permit to use this bike, but that means you can, you can't go on the highway, but you could go on a bike path, you could go on the city streets, and so on and so. And I understand what you're saying, especially, especially insurance, because you can get killed with a bike going 7 miles an hour going down the street.
Look at the guy in the park, he got...
These things go like 35. The other thing that was in there was, it really, it really puts the responsibility or ownness on the parents.
Parents.
You know, for, if, if there is an incident or something like that, currently, there is no original. I'm actually pretty for the, you know, I don't mind that provision at all, I think it's, I think it's a good thing. You know, I mean, I've always watched over my kids, and if they got trouble, you know, they were in trouble.
Yeah.
By me, I don't care about anybody else, but that's, that's another part of the law that, it's multifaceted, it's not just, we're disallowing this, it's, it's got a lot of things in there that...
I just, I don't know if there's any planning issues that come up that we need to bring to the town board's attention. I think there are some substantive issues with the law itself that people might want to bring up. I just think it's rather broad. Apparently, you can't ride a dirt bike, or a trail bicycle.
Well, dirt bike, I think they meant to say, like...
What's a trail bike?
Motorcycle. Trail bike is...
I have one.
Well, trail bike, in the motorcycle world, is a bike with no...
A dirt bike.
A dirt bike's, yeah, like a motorcycle ride.
At the point, somewhere in the law, it does say that it's, 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 it's not self-propelled, you know, it's so, it's, you know, a motorcycle or something.
Yeah, trail bike is...
Or an e-bike, where, you know, you don't have it necessarily. I think in the, in the beginning of the law, it does say something like that.
Trial bike.
I haven't looked at the law for about a week and a half, so, you know, I mean, it's pretty tense, so...
Well, you sent it, you know, it came over here.
No, I, I've seen it, I've seen it prior to it coming here, trust me. Yeah, so...
All right. We need to do a memo?
I don't know, just write it's broad. I'm sure they're gonna get their ears full. John, you got any suggestion, or?
On this, no, no planning.
I don't see any planning.
I don't, I don't think there's much planning here. I mean, obviously, the parking issue of, of a collection of unregistered motor vehicles is an issue, but I think that's a property maintenance.
All right, so as, on our end, we might have issues as residents, but...
Right.
For planning, there's no, we agree with that, no planning issue?
Okay. Unless you, unless you wanna, you guys want to approve the registration of all of these things, then you might want to claim that.
David says he wants to do it.
Why don't we get a percentage?
Get him in office of town hall. All right, we still have our executive session to go into. I would ask David real quick, if you could, because I know there's been some concerns about...
Just a memo about that?
Yeah, I mean, so, for executive session purposes, if we feel...
You get a memo?
Yeah. Jack, you're gonna get yelled at.
Some misunderstanding is the board's gonna ask for legal advice. That is absolutely tentative, executive session. I would strongly recommend that if you are going to ask for or solicit legal advice, that you do move, so move and go into executive session. I, I did read, read the memo, I think that you're referring to, I, I understand the concern, you know, obviously, we have an open meetings law. Any resolution that the board may pass, any action the board may take, is obviously not gonna be done in executive session, it's only for the purpose of, of requesting and receiving legal advice, which, which is the purpose for it. So I, I think that, hopefully that allays the concerns that were expressed in that memo, and, and it's my recommendation that if you do want to seek legal advice, you do go into executive session.
I think that's what we're doing. Sorry, sorry, Susan, please. So in regards to any resolution that comes out of our discussions about legalities in getting sued, we would discuss in an open session.
The resolution, the decision, is a matter of public record, that of course cannot be made in, in executive session, but that's, I don't think that's what's being asked.
Okay. All right, so I...
Well, I, I would just clarify, if we move to go into executive session, it's, it's got two components, but the main reason I would say go into executive session and support such a resolution is, because we have some specific projects, we have some specific developers, in which we may be taking further action, and I think we need to get some advice as to what we can do in that sense, with the specific people. If we do any other discussion on a generic type of a resolution...
It'd be done in the open.
Do that open.
Right, and we, that's what we always do.
So I would, I would move we go into executive session to seek advice of counsel on the issues of enforcement that we have been facing with respect to some specific projects.
I second that motion.
I, I can't.
I second, I second, I second that motion. All's a favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, thank you very much.
We're gonna come back, I mean, we're gonna, probably come back into open session and conclude our discussion with counsel, which we would have done at the beginning, if I didn't get stuck in the jurisdiction decision.
I'll be waiting outside.
Yeah, do that, I'm, I'm telling you, it'll bring you back.
Who's jurisdiction?
Listen, I don't want to say it on purpose.